So we're going to go ahead and get started. Thank you everyone for joining us. This is EPO's Candidates Forum for Board of Supervisors District Five and Oakland City Council District Three. Before we jump in to the panels, we wanted to talk a little bit about EPO because I know that many of you are new to who we are and what we do. And I first want to start off by saying that you can turn on captions if that is something that you need to do to follow along. And we are recording this, so this will be available on our website afterwards as well. So let's go ahead and get started. Next slide. We want to open with a land acknowledgement and recognize that while we gather tonight, we must acknowledge indigenous people as the stewards of the land on which we live and build. The East Bay is the unceded territory of the Listiana Longi people. And as we work against the displacement of the people in our community, we recognize and name the histories of displacement of the communities that existed here before us. We want to uplift the work of our Aloni neighbors to create spaces of belonging. And EPO is in the process of paying Shumi, a voluntary land tax that supports the work of the Sabori Te Land Trust, which returns Aloni land to Aloni people, and we encourage you all to do the same. Next slide. We want to thank our partners for tonight who helped put this event together. The Alameda County Community Food Bank, the League of Women Voters of Oakland and St. Mary's Center. In addition to supporting promoting this event, they also contributed questions for our panels and supported with moderating. Next slide. So we want to also, I would like to start by providing a little bit of information about East Bay Housing Organizations, who is the main host of tonight's event. EPO, our mission statement is here, we mobilize the power and wisdom of our members to produce, preserve, and protect affordable housing opportunities for low-income communities in the East Bay. Next slide. So EPO has been around for many years. We are a membership-based organization. And on this slide, you will see the logos of many of our over 400 members that include organizations, community members, nonprofits, developers of affordable housing. Anyone can be an EPO member who shares our goals and our mission. Among our member base is Urban Habitat, the San Francisco Foundation, nonprofit affordable housing in Northern California, Centro Legal, and many, many more. Next slide. So you can also become a member of EPO and be a part of the movement work that we are doing. Right now is the perfect time to join as we are beginning to have our membership drive for 2025. We also have some exciting events coming up, some open to the public like today's event, and some that are for members in particular, such as our membership meeting in November. And it's very easy to become a member. You can go to our website, epo.org/membership. There's a QR code right there on the screen as well. And there's a photo here on screen of some of the staff of EPO. EPO is celebrating its 40th anniversary this year, and so it's a really exciting year for the work that we're doing, and we would love for you to continue to join us beyond today. Next slide. One thing about EPO that you can access through our website is our 2024 Election Hub. We are very excited to participate in election work. While East Bay Housing Organizations is a nonprofit organization and we do not endorse particular candidates, we do think that it is important and crucial to educate our members about what is out there, who is out there seeking office and what is on the ballot. And so we have this election hub here that is a great resource. You can look at what's on the ballot and find out where EPO stands on positions related to propositions and measures, which we can take a position on. We also have a candidate questionnaire, which we distributed to candidates in both Alameda and Contra Costa County for particular seats. And we invited the candidates to respond to 10 questions related to affordable housing, tenant protections and preservation of affordable housing. And we are sharing their responses with our broad membership. So in addition to hearing the candidates' responses today, you are going to be able to even take a further dive into where candidates stand by looking up their candidate questionnaires on our websites. We also are doing candidate forums such as this to be able to educate our membership base. And we know that many of our members will be able to access this video after the fact, too. We had in the last election, we had over 1,500 unique hits to our candidate questionnaires and several hundred unique hits to the videos prior to the November election. So we know that these resources are reaching our members and even beyond to the broader audience. So we encourage you to check out that election hub and learn more. Next step. Next slide. So one of the things that we can take positions on is ballot measures. We are in strong support on Proposition 5, and while I don't want to spend too much time here today on that, I do encourage you to check on Yes on Prop 5. There is more information on our website as well. Next slide. And you can help its founder coalition in support of Proposition 5 by joining our network, distributing materials, helping promote Prop 5. Prop 5 is going to lower the voter threshold for housing-related ballot initiatives so that ballot initiatives can, so that housing-related ballot initiatives have the opportunity to pass and to support affordable, which will ultimately support affordable housing development. And again, you can learn more about the specifics of that through our website or through the Yes on Prop 5 website. Next slide. We have this forum today, and we also have a second forum for Oakland City Council District 5, 7, and at-large happening next Thursday, a week from today at the same time. And you can join us for that if those are in your district and you want to learn more, or we definitely encourage you to share it out with people who you know live in that district and who have those council districts on their ballot. And you can RSVP through the EPO website, through our calendar of events, or through the elections hub. And we hope that you will join us if it's something that you want to learn more about. Next slide. In addition to our candidate information, our website, we also have another public perk that is open to the public Lunch and Learn Series, which is a series that has been happening all year. And we have the next three series planned. October 24th, we're going to be talking about TOPA. November 21st, we're going to be talking about homelessness. And then in December, we'll be saying goodbye to 2024 and hello to 2025. You can RSVP. These are free and open to the public at bit.ly/epo2024. And this is just another perk of being engaged with EPO, although we do absolutely encourage you to become a member as well. Next slide. You can keep up with EPO by going to our website. We are also on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. You can find us there, and we hope that you will stay engaged with EPO beyond today's event. And I believe that's the last slide, and we are going to jump now into introducing our moderator for this evening. Very excited and appreciative of Monique Berlanga and the work that she does as the Executive Director of Centro Legal de la Raza. And Monique has over 15 years of eviction defense litigation experience, representing thousands of tenants across the East Bay. Prior to taking on the position of BD at Centro, Monique served as the directing attorney of Centro's Tenant Rights Practice, as a housing staff attorney at Bay Area Legal Aid, and a managing attorney at the Eviction Defense Center. Monique holds a Juris Doctor degree from the University of California, Berkeley School of Law, and was born and raised in Hayward, and is honored to be able to dedicate her career to anti-displacement work in her community. Thank you for joining us, and Monique, I'll toss it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Dolores. Thank you, EPO. So we'll go ahead and get started. So each candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer each question. We'll start with a little bit of an opener, then I'll rotate the order of asking you the questions, and then we'll end with a little bit of a closing statement. You'll see the timekeeper there, so I may politely nudge you to wrap up if we are running into the time. So please excuse me for that in advance. We want to make sure that everything is fair. So we'll go ahead and jump in. So we will start with councilmember vouchers for the first response. Please tell us a little bit about yourself and what makes you the most qualified to be our next D3 supervisor?
Well, thank you so much for having me, and thank you to EPO for all the work you've done to put this together. My name's John Bouders. I'm an Emeryville Council member and I'm a candidate for District 5 Supervisor. My pathway to this race begins with my own lived experience with housing justice issues. I was unhoused as a young person. I was homeless in Southern California, and my first house was a boarding house, where I paid $71 a week for a room as my affordable housing access. I've spent 25 years helping other people access housing. First number of years in my career, I was a homeless outreach worker. I spent a number of years as a tenant defense director and the housing programs director at Cabrini-Green Legal Aid in Chicago, where I defended public housing tenants and Section 8 families against public housing evictions. I became the policy director at Housing California out here a number of years ago, and I did statewide work on affordable housing and tenant protections. And for the last 10 years, I worked at a BIPOC-run organization in Oakland where I do victims' justice, which includes access to housing and other safety interventions to keep people safe. As a member of the city council, I passed Measure C in 2018, which was the highest per capita affordable housing bond in the state's history. And I've worked on both the Prop 41 campaigns for veterans' housing, as well as in support of Measure A1 in Alameda County to make housing affordable here in partnership with the folks at EPO. So I've had a long history of housing justice work, and I want to be a county supervisor to ensure that everybody has a home, everybody has access to tenant protections, and that we preserve existing affordable housing to make sure that people who are from Alameda County and grew up here and live here and work here can stay here. I hope to earn your vote. Look forward to the questions. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll turn to you, Council President Bass. Can you tell us what makes you the most qualified to be our next D3 supervisor?
Well, first, thank you to EPO and all of you for hosting this forum and having us tonight. My name is Nikki Fortunato-Bass. I've lived in Oakland and Alameda County for 27 years. I'm a working mom, a lifelong organizer, and an effective legislator who collaborates with our community. The five-person Board of Supervisors oversees a $4.6 billion budget for our public health care system and our social safety net. And I'm running for supervisor to be a strong voice for Oakland, Berkeley, and our district, breaking down the silos of government to work together to serve our most vulnerable residents. As president of the Oakland City Council, I've been bringing together our diverse communities and tackling the tough, complex issues, including housing justice. I authored the Strongest COVID Eviction Moratorium, together with many of you here, the strongest moratorium in the state, and also co-authored the strongest Fair Chance Housing Law on the West Coast. I worked with the Oakland Community Land Trust to create a multimillion-dollar preservation fund that supports housing insecure tenants to purchase their homes. And we've preserved over 300 homes at an average cost of $200,000 per unit. I led the passage of a $350 million affordable housing bond. And in less than two years, we've made awards for over 1,000 units. And I'm also partnering with the community to make sure that we build on public land to 100% affordable units, to make sure we're using public land for public good. I'd be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go to the next question, and Council President Bass will begin with you. We're going to start with talking about homelessness. What should the county's response be to the recent Supreme Court decision in the Grants Pass case allowing localities to enforce criminal penalties for being unhoused?
So I believe the county does have to be much more assertive in having a housing-first policy, working regionally with every single city, as well as the unincorporated areas, as well as our private and state and federal partners. We have to make sure we are getting people into housing. It's not okay just to be moving people around from place to place. And I know firsthand from being an Oakland Council member how important it is to have that level of collaboration. More specifically, building off the Home Together Plan, I think that the county could play a much stronger role in using public land for public good, having a public lands policy so that we have more places that are safe RV and car parking sites so that we can identify more temporary shelter as well as permanent supportive housing. And I think very importantly, because cities like Oakland have funding to create affordable housing, we have to pair those construction dollars with much more robust partnership with the county to provide the services for permanent supportive housing. There's a lot more that we could do to improve coordinated entry to make sure people get the services they need, as well as strengthen our outreach services. At the end of the day, again, we have to have a much stronger level of collaboration. And I think that as an Oakland Council member, working with the county to improve how we address this problem, that I'll be well-suited to make improvements.
Thank you. Councilmember vouchers, same question to you.
Thank you. Yeah, well, I would definitely not do what the city of Oakland and my opponent's colleagues have been doing, which is engaging in sweeps. People who are unhoused deserve dignity and they deserve care. And I think what has to happen first is that we have to have a continuum of services that meet people where they're at. So I'm proud that here in Emeryville, when we partnered with the city of Oakland under prior leadership, we were able to house 75 people who were currently unhoused at that time behind the Home Depot on the city's border. We were able to bring them services and care, and we combined resources to get outcomes, and that's how I lead. We also opened a homeless shelter and a temporary rec center that we had built while we were redoing our high school, and we moved 25 families from Oakland into our city to help house them through the Family Front Door Program. We need to establish navigation hubs. It's not sufficient to ask people who are unhoused, who have often got barriers through addiction or mental health issues, other challenges that they face, to navigate a system that's completely fractured and often spread out across the county. I think that the county has a central role in partnering with cities to help create navigation hubs where people can get shelter and alongside shelter, they can get robust social services that support them. Uniform intakes that help people qualify for all their public benefits at one time should be a mandatory component of how the county delivers services, and there should be no wrong door for entry into care. I think in the long term, the biggest thing the county needs to do is re-up Measure A1 with an emphasis on providing funding to affordable housing projects that are currently in the pipeline but remain unfunded because the long-term solution to homelessness is homes. And that should include an emphasis on permanent supportive housing, leveraging Prop 1 dollars that we have now from measure.
Well, thank you, Councilmember vouchers, for that segue into this next question. And we, Councilmember vouchers, will ask you to respond first. One of the biggest barriers to affordable housing is the lack of a stable stream of funding. As you know, all of the funds from the county's Measure A1 housing bond have been committed, and there's no regional housing bond on the ballot. What county-level revenue sources would you pursue?
Well, I mean, I think I've spoken to that just a moment ago. It's terrible that the Bafa measure was pulled from the ballot. It should have been put before the voters. I understand some of the folks on the campaign were concerned about its viability in light of litigation from some taxpayer organizations, but we need to return to that. And if the region isn't prepared to do that, then Alameda County should do that. The dollars were sucked up. There were a number of initiatives within A1 for incentive programs and other kind of experimental tests with dollars that I don't think are necessary this time around. I think we should increase the bond value. I think we should also emphasize funding projects that are currently in the pipeline but are not fully funded, and then follow that with special needs populations, people who have physical disabilities, hard-to-house populations, like people who are living with AIDS, foster youth who are aging out of care. That should be the priority for Alameda County because that has overlap and duplication with the primary purpose of the county service dollars, which is to serve people in the child welfare system, serve people who have mental health issues, serve people who need in-home supportive care. Housing is a health intervention, and we can save dollars and other costs to the county on these other service systems that we're primarily responsible for if we prioritize not just funding housing with a permanent funding source, but also actually targeting populations that are high need and high barrier, who are users of the healthcare system. Because by doing that, we can achieve better social health and economic outcomes for those families and individuals, and improve the quality of life for people in Alameda County.
Thank you. Council President Bass, same question to you.
So I do serve on the executive board of the Association of Bay Area Governments and have been engaged in Bafa and the Regional Housing Bond. I am committed to making sure that we continue to explore that as one avenue. And I also was the lead council author on Measure U, which is Oakland's $350 million affordable housing bond. It was not easy to get that onto the ballot. As we were putting it together, you know, I made sure that we had a focus on affordable housing. We more than tripled our investment from previously. And while it was not polling well, I pushed to make sure the council put it on the ballot and volunteered to pass it. So I'm really proud that we have that as a funding source, and I'm proud of the work that I did to make sure that we carried through. I also think that in addition to looking at a future regional bond, we should look at another similar measure to Measure A1 with recent legislation that was passed that Nancy Skinner authored. I think we could look at other ways that we can craft a regional measure. Maybe it's not the nine counties, maybe it's two counties. And then I think we have to also look at how can we be creative in financing affordable housing? Could we potentially increase our real estate transfer tax and have that go towards affordable housing? Could we potentially look at, you know, making sure we launch our East Bay Public Bank so that we can have more resources through a public bank in our investments to fund affordable housing? And then there's also other things that we've been looking at at the city of Oakland that we could also look at at the county, like EIFDs. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember, excuse me, Council President Bass, this next question will go to you first. What actions would you pursue to ensure that the county is doing more to meet its need to preserve and produce affordable housing?
So I think I touched upon that in terms of the funding mechanisms, in terms of production and preservation. I would also touch upon the work that I did, again, in partnership with our Oakland Community Land Trust and ACE. Preservation is a really important strategy. We've been able to preserve, like I said, over 300 units, making them permanently affordable with land trusts and co-ops at just a fraction of the cost of housing, construction, that is. I think that we can do a number of things. That includes potentially looking at inclusionary zoning and what works across our region. We could also look at a potential public lands policy and really make sure that we deliver on public land for public good. You know, what do our government agencies, as well as the county, have in terms of vacant buildings, land that we could use for affordable housing, as well as potentially interim homeless housing? I do think we have to continue partnering with the state. I am proud that Oakland has been successful in securing our encampment resolution fund grants so that we can purchase buildings for homelessness. And we also have three Home Key projects coming online. And so I think that collaboration with our federal and state partners, as well as being creative and looking at other policies that can create and preserve more affordable housing are really important.
Thank you. Councilmember vouchers, same question to you.
Yeah, thank you very much for the question. So a few things. I think replicating some of the things that I initiated in the city of Emeryville would be starts. One of those things is that we should be ground leasing properties that we own or putting them into community land trusts, protecting the land that the public already owns to ensure that it can be dedicated and preserved long-term for affordable housing by either allowing affordable housing developers to ground lease and develop something that gives us the right to examine the need for different uses in 50 to 75 years, or putting it permanently into a community land trust where it's going to be dedicated, affordable in the long term. I think there's other things you can do. There's, in our development code, we actually incentivize inclusionary housing by incentivizing the development bonus process to include inclusionary housing at affordable levels equal and proportionate to our RENA obligations. That's how we've been able to meet our RENA in Emeryville. So when a developer comes in, they need to get a certain number of bonus points in the development system. And with that, we're able to say, we're going to extract 20% of the units being affordable in a ratio equal to RENA, so that we're building housing for people of all economic strata as we go. I think there's other policies that we could do. We had an expenditure plan we passed after we had passed Measure C in 2018, and that 2020 expenditure plan looked at how to preserve housing that currently exists. And so we gave grants to property owners to upkeep and improve housing that was older stock, but allowed us to put dedicated deed-restricted affordability covenants on those properties. And I think those are things that we should do across Alameda County to ensure that people who currently live in housing or want to find housing in the community can stay where they live.
Thank you. And we're going to head a different direction now for this next question, and this will go to you, Councilmember vouchers first. Tenant protection measures for the unincorporated county have been discussed multiple times by the Board of Supervisors, but nothing's been adopted. What would you do to support and strengthen tenants' rights? For example, which of the following policies would you support or oppose, and why? Rent stabilization or control, just cause for eviction, anti-harassment protections, and a fair chance ordinance?
Okay, and can you put those items in the chat so I can just make sure I see all the things you said? Okay, great.
Yes, no.
Yeah, so thank you for the question. In terms of tenant protections, just to go down the list, I support all of these items. On the list, rent stabilization, control, just cause for eviction, anti-harassment protections, and a fair chance ordinance. We've done all of these things up to rent stabilization already in Emeryville. And we have also done, let's see, we've also done right to return and right of first refusal options for tenants so that when they are asked to leave for no-fault evictions, they have the right to return if improvements or other things are being done to a property that they lived in for a long period of time. We also have relocation assistance to people, which happens in its striated approach, tiered approach. So based on the amount of time that you've lived in a unit, you get a progressive amount of relocation assistance to assist you in finding a new home, the longer you've been in the community. And those are incentives to keep landlords from engaging in the first place in no-fault evictions or move-ins. So these are all things that I support. I'm happy that the Board of Supervisors, after a very tedious six years, finally took action on a number of these items. I think there's probably some work to still be done, but I think it's a good start for tenants in unincorporated county.
Thank you, Council President Bass. I'll repeat the question since it was rather lengthy, and it is in the chat. Tenant protection measures for the unincorporated county have been discussed multiple times by the Board of Supervisors, but nothing's been adopted. What would you do to support and strengthen tenants' rights? For example, which of the following policies would you support or oppose, and why? Run control or stabilization, just cause for eviction, anti-harassment protections, and a fair chance ordinance?
Thank you for that question. So first off, I'll say that I'm really proud to partner with groups like EPO and your members. I've been endorsed by both the Oakland Tenants Union and the Berkeley Tenants Union because I have been a strong partner, as well as a strong champion for tenant protections. Oakland has some of the strongest tenant protection laws in the entire state. And I would work to ensure that our tenant protections in the county are uniformly applied and partner with groups in the unincorporated areas to make sure that we improve the conditions for tenants there. It's been a long six years to get to where we are in terms of the county board finally looking at just cause eviction protections, as well as mediation. I have supported, and I do support, the list of items that you just mentioned. Again, I'm proud to have co-authored a really strong fair chance ordinance in the city of Oakland. I would look at also making sure that there is a rent registry so that we can keep track of our rental units. And I have been making sure that at the city of Oakland that we fund tenant legal services, as well as some legal services for property owners. We need to continue to make sure that tenants have the legal and other resources they need to be informed of their rights, as well as to go to court if it comes to that. So I would continue to be a strong champion for tenant protections.
Thank you. This next question will begin with you, Councilmember vouchers. Our last question, oh, excuse me, not our second to last question. It's about hunger, and it comes from the Alameda County Food Bank. What are some ways you would like to, A, continue, and B, change course in terms of new and existing vegetarian and other measures to address food and economic insecurity?
You want me to go first? Oh, okay.
Actually, no, 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 no. You are absolutely right. I skipped ahead. I advanced from Council President Bass, please. Sorry, excuse me about that.
Thank you. So in terms of addressing hunger, I'm really proud of the city of Oakland to have a strong track record and making sure that we expand food security. We've had a focus, and I've had a focus on making sure that we provide food security to our seniors through funding great groups like SOS Meals on Wheels. I have also worked to make sure that our farmers markets, like the one in Grand Lake in my district, have a long-term lease and support them in making sure that customers can use CalFresh in order to get fresh and organic produce. And I think it's really important to continue to make sure that the county supports the whole network of organizations that provide food security, and especially our food bank. So I would continue to do that. And then I think that there are some really important initiatives across District 5 and across the county, like Resilient Fruitvale, for example, community organizations that really leveraged their relationships with their members, with their clients. Community organizations that really leveraged their relationships with their members, with their clients to provide meals throughout the year as well as programming. I'm proud to be part of making sure that we promote those type of programs in parks like San Antonio Park, and I would do the same thing in other places in District Five to make sure we've got a robust network, not only in terms of the county, but our community partners and that we use our public spaces, our senior centers, our parks and rec centers to do that work.
Thank you. Councilmember vouchers, same question to you.
Thank you for the question. Yeah, food security is perhaps one of the most important and basic human rights that we need to protect. I personally believe in publicly subsidizing food assistance because I believe it's a healthcare intervention and it should be part of the health system services. I've worked for a number of years at the Emeryville Citizens Assistance Program, which is a food service and food security organization, completely volunteer run and a nonprofit. We serve two hundred thousand plus meals a year to people who are hungry or homeless in Alameda County. And under my leadership in the city of Emeryville, the city council purchased an entire block of the city out of bankruptcy a number of years ago. And with it, we are converting that into ninety-one units of permanent supportive housing for the people in the community who are homeless or have mental health challenges. And we are taking the ECAP program, which has temporarily been relocated to Twenty-seventh and San Pablo in West Oakland. And we are moving it into the ground floor of this building. And this is significant for a couple of reasons. One, not well, only will people have a dining room and a kitchen to have a dignified sit-down meal if they'd like, as opposed to standing in the heat on a sidewalk. But it's actually a model for how community services in the community can be brought into supportive housing and and affordable housing and be still a vehicle and a doorway for people to get access to broader care. I believe that we should co-locate other types of services, language assistance programs, access to things like SNAP, mental health care. Those should be provided at places where people get food assistance. Because oftentimes, people who are receiving that assistance in the first place are under their needs broader than food security.
Thank you. And this will be the last question before we give an opportunity for closing remarks. The county sold its interest in the Oakland Coliseum. What role, if any, do you think the county can play in the redevelopment of that site? How might the county support area residents to ensure meaningful community benefits are included in the final development agreement between the city of Oakland and the developer? Councilmember vouchers, we will start with you this time.
Yeah, so I'll begin by just saying, I think the county made a major mistake in transferring its ownership interest to a private entity, the owner of the ACE. And I think they should have worked in good faith with the city of Oakland and either transferred their interest to the Oakland City Council and its leadership or worked in a partnership agreement of some kind in order to ensure that there could be a singular transaction to allow for the Coliseum to be redeveloped. It's a very important asset to the city of Oakland. And I think that it needs to be redeveloped very thoughtfully to prioritize the people of East Oakland who have been hungry for jobs, hungry for opportunity, and stand to be displaced if it's not developed thoughtfully. So I think it's a really important opportunity. Having given up their leverage by walking away from their interest in the Coliseum site, the Board of Supervisors is really only in a position to seek voluntary partnership. But as a supervisor, I'm somebody who has a very long history of building coalitions. When the East Bay Times endorsed me, they noted that I have a reputation for doing hard work, building partnerships and bridging gaps. And that would be the work I would do with the leaders of the Oakland City Council as well as the partners of the community. So that we ensure that there are jobs for local people. We ensure that those jobs are green and forward-thinking as to the economy and the future of our planet and that there's housing that's abundant and affordable. Those are things that East Oakland has, does not have in riches, but has an opportunity. And I think that's an opportunity we should not squander and that we should look to fulfilling a lot of the unmet needs for people across the city of Oakland that could be fulfilled if we are active and engaged partners. So while we don't have a lot of direct leverage, I would be a very active player in negotiating and helping secure the city.
Thank you. Council President Boss, same question to you.
Thanks for the question. And so obviously, as an Oakland resident for twenty-seven years, a council member for six and a president of the council for the past four years, there's a lot that I believe that the county can do in terms of having a much stronger partnership and actual collaboration with the leadership at Oakland. And I think I'm well positioned to help build that partnership because I'm already doing that on this project as well as some issues around homelessness. I will say that I was the proponent of making sure that the ordinance for the city's sale of the Coliseum included a couple deed restrictions. A deed restriction to ensure at least twenty-five percent affordable housing as well as a deed restriction to ensure that there would be a community benefits agreement. And I do work with a set of organizations that are very active in East Oakland, including the Coalition that includes the Black Cultural Zone, Allen Temple, and longstanding organizations out in East Oakland and also Oakland Unite, which includes Communities for a Better Environment, a number of community and labor organizations. And I think it's important for the county supervisors to use their platform to really put forward a vision for what community benefits could look like and to really help to encourage. And you know, when it's appropriate to be hands-on in terms of encouraging that agreement.
Thank you, candidates. We will now transition to closing remarks. And so each candidate will get two minutes to provide closing remarks. And we will start with you, Council President Boss.
Thank you. So again, I really appreciate this opportunity. Housing justice has been incredibly important to me, not only as a council member, but as an organizer. And I do want to underscore that, you know, Oakland is the largest city in Alameda County with a budget that's proportionate to its size. I know what it takes to work on complex issues and policy and budget at scale at the county. And I believe that because our challenges are so large and systemic, it requires someone who has that experience dealing with these complex issues and a comprehensive approach with collaborative leadership. I am endorsed by Senator Nancy Skinner, Berkeley Mayor Jesse Aragín, former Oakland Mayor Ella Hugh Harris and Bart Board Member Latifah Simon because they know I'm a principled and accountable leader that delivers results. And again, I am proud to be endorsed by our Oakland Tenants Union, the Berkeley Tenants Union, because I've been a champion for tenants and affordable housing. In this particular race, I want to encourage voters to follow the money, follow the money and see who the real housing champion is. Corporate special interests, including the California Apartment Association and the National Association of Realtors, their PACs are supporting my opponent, each spending about fifty thousand dollars to run ads against me. So I think it's clear who they don't want in office. I will be a champion for tenants for affordable housing. I believe that I will be the strongest voice for Oakland Berkeley in our region. And I'll be able to collaborate to make sure that I can represent the county's interests as a whole. Again, we have seen that there are silos that our governments are working in. And because I've already been working as an Oakland council member to break those silos with the county, I believe I'm well positioned to make sure we actually collaborate more deeply to get the impact that we deserve to reduce poverty, to provide affordable housing to our most vulnerable residents, and I'd be honored to earn your vote.
Thank you. And Councilmember vouchers, you will now have two minutes for closing remarks.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone coming to this forum today. I personally believe that when it comes to housing justice, the most important thing we can do is pick somebody who's done the work for their entire career. My own lived experience, my work as a tenant defense director, my work at Cabrini Green, where I represented single mothers facing eviction in public housing for one-strike evictions for alleged criminal and drug-related behaviors tied to their children. That is not a history that you can really just erase or paste it over. I've done the work in Sacramento as well. In twenty fourteen, I was asked by the then Speaker to help put together a program to create housing justice for people who were in CalWorks, low-income families that were facing homelessness while they were trying to find employment opportunities. And the twenty million dollar pilot that I helped craft in the budget that year is now a three hundred and eighty million dollar annual program. My opponent wants to tell you that she should be elevated to this office because she sits on a city council for a very big city, one that has been mismanaged pretty badly under her leadership. The financial situation in Oakland shouldn't be balanced on the back of one-time budget allocations from the sale of a site like the Coliseum. It should be structurally sound. I've been the budget chair in Emeryville for eight years. We have a structurally sound budget. We're one of a handful of pro-housing cities in the state of California. We're one of only two that had its housing element approved on its first draft. And our efforts to affirmatively further fair housing have been noticed by the governor. When we put together our ninety-unit permanent supportive housing building, it received forty-five million dollars of accelerator funding from HCD because of its vision and its commitment to serving the most poor among us. That isn't leadership that you can just replicate by saying you sit in a big city. It actually takes work in the community. And so while my opponent touts several endorsements, I have some of my own, including Keith Carson, supervisor of this district for the past thirty-two years, Buffy Wicks, a leader on housing and affordability justice, the Housing Action Coalition, Mia Bonta, Elaine Brown, the chairperson of the Black Panther Party in its original days. I have leadership with community leaders who understand housing justice and are doing the work to produce housing, and I will do.
Thank you, candidates, for your time and for your thoughtful answers. We will now transition to our next panel, which will begin at seven oh five. So we hope to see you all back here at seven oh five for the next panel.
Thank you. Have a lovely evening.
Thanks, you too.
Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
All right. Thanks for joining us and sticking with us. So we are now going to jump into our Oakland City Council District D three, District Three panel. And I want to remind the candidates that, and let the audience know that panelists did agree to rules of decorum for the panel, including sticking within the time limit. And I know that we have at least one of our candidates here. And we are going to go ahead and promote that person to a panelist. Our moderator for this panel again will be Monique Berlanga from Centro Legal de la Raza. And we do have a statement from Councilmember Carol Fife, who is sick and unable to make it today. And I am noticing that we are missing our, our other, another panelist, Baba Afalabi. And so we are going to give him a minute to join. He did confirm, we have been communicating with him this evening, that he is set to join us. So what will happen is that Monique will read the statement from Carol Fife. And we, if Baba Afalabi is not in by that time, we will allow candidate Warren Logan to make a one-minute statement. And because the league has rules where we do not have panels with only one candidate, we will have to cancel the panel if our second panelist does not show up. But I do want to also note that we did ask some great affordable housing related questions through the questionnaire. So if the candidates filled out that questionnaire, it will be on our, it should be on our website. And while the questions from tonight were not the same as we're on the questionnaire, it is still a good opportunity to learn more about the candidates' positions. And it looks like we do have our second candidate here. And so we will have, we will continue and proceed. First, I'm going to toss it to Monique to read the statement from Councilmember Carol Fife. And then she can jump right in to the panel with Warren Logan and Baba Afalabi. Take it away, Monique.
Great. Thank you so much, Dolores. Good evening and welcome back, everybody. So I will now read the statement from Councilmember Fife. "Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry I'm not able to be with you in person, but I am home with a fever and sore throat trying to rest up for an election cycle like no other. We all know that a house is so much more than a roof over our heads, and we know that the answer to homelessness is in the word home. Understand this. My commitment remains the same. We've organized for ten years to ensure that everyone has access to safe, affordable housing. I will continue to work for policies that increase affordable housing preservation, protections, and production. Let's continue to work so that everyone has a safe place to thrive and we make housing a human right." So with that, we will go ahead and get started with the questions. And candidates, I know you've been informed of the format, but for everybody else in the audience, we will start with some opening statements. Candidates will get one and a half minutes to provide a bit of an opener. And then we will get, I will ask you questions. We will rotate the order. And you will get one and a half minutes to respond to those questions. And then at the end, we will have a opportunity for closing remarks. So there's a timer on the screen that will announce when the time is over and I may have to politely wrap it up, ask you to wrap up if you are going over time to keep things fair. So with that, we will go ahead and get started. So we are going to start with Mr. Afalabi. In one and a half minutes, can you please introduce yourself and share why you are the most qualified to be our next mayor? I'm sorry, not mayor. This is District Three Council, Councilmember.
It's, it's okay. It's all, all the same. It's to me, you know, you got to take yourself as the mayor of District Three. So with that said, thank you so much for having this panel. My name is Baba Afalabi. I'm a resident of District Three for the last twenty-six years. I was an homeowner, a small landlord before, and a business owner in, in downtown for the last fifteen, sixteen years. The reason why I believe that I am most qualified for this job is the fact that I have history in downtown for so long that I've been. And looking at the city council right now, we do not have a business-minded person on the council that can really represent the business community. And when I talk about business, I'm not talking about the restaurant and bars. I'm talking about small landlords. I'm talking about your lawyers and doctors and CPA. Because these are the people that a lot of policies in the council has rolled out affected. And these are the same people that hire people that pay rents. These are the people that also give opportunity to people that are small landlords. So we need to understand how the ecosystem works. And that's something that I believe I understand very well. And again, I've been a job provider in, in, in the city. And I've been in this district for the last twenty-six years, like I mentioned, and I've been part of a rental and a small landlord. So I understand how the ecosystem works. And this is why I want to be a new voice and a different energy into the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Logan, in one and one and a half minutes, can you please introduce yourself and share why you are the most qualified to be our next D three council member?
And not mayor. Thanks, Monique. So first and foremost, thank you so much to EBHO and League Women Voters for both supporting affordable housing in the city and in the region and to hosting this amazing forum tonight. I have had the great pleasure of working with both organizations throughout my career and, and just really honored that you all brought us here today. So thank you. Also, thank you, Baba. I just saw you five minutes ago at the farmer's market. So great to see you again. For everyone else, I am Warren Logan and I am also running for Oakland City Council District Three. I moved to Oakland about ten years ago in search of a supportive community for Black gay men. And I found so much more than that, and I'm very happy to call this place my home. I love it here and I, I'm very happy to even have gotten married here. So I love Oakland. My background is in land use and transportation planning. I have served as a transportation planner and city planner for over fifteen years now. Most notably, I was the chief of section, the section chief of community resilience during COVID for the city of Oakland. I created our award-winning Slow Streets program. I also created the Business Resiliency Strategies during COVID that kept so many businesses alive during a very challenging time. And most importantly, I created the city's first testing sites in at-risk neighborhoods. Again, I'm running for District Three to make it clean, safe, and vibrant. And when I say clean, addressing illegal dumping, safety to improve public safety and partnership with emergency response teams and vibrancy to support against small businesses. So I hope to win your support and just educate voters on all the key issues that we're going to talk about tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll go into the first question and we will start with you, Mr. Logan. This question comes from the Alamani, excuse me, Alameda County Food Bank. If elected, how will you work with diverse stakeholders to address housing insecurity as a major driving factor behind food insecurity, tackling the two issues together rather than separately?
Thanks for that question. First, I want to acknowledge that it is really expensive to live in the city of Oakland and frankly, in the Bay Area. And I think we all know that, but it's important that we name that. When we talk about affordability, I mean affordability across multiple ranges, not just, but most importantly, zero to thirty percent AMI, and I'm sure we'll get to that later. I have a number of strategies for sort of all of the above for housing and for connections to affordable food as well. The first of which is this balanced approach by just building more housing. First and foremost, the city of Oakland and District Three has a lot of vacant land, much of which the city of Oakland owns. I think it's critical that the city build affordable housing on its properties. That's perhaps most important. The second is that we make sure to have a strong tax base, which supports Measure U, which is our funding for, again, more affordable housing and rehabbing existing units. The next part, though, and I think this is critical, is that your city council, along with the Planning Commission, affects zoning in this city. And so when we talk about access to healthy food, it's important to consider that just building affordable housing is not enough. West Oakland, and frankly, District Three entirely, is a food desert, and that's unacceptable. And so what we need to do is make sure that we are, A, zoning for the types of uses we want to see, namely grocery stores and other market spaces. B, making sure that we're providing spaces for markets just like the ones that B, making sure that we're providing spaces for markets just like the ones that Bob and I were just at in the Prescott community. And then finally, providing funding whenever possible to make both of those things work together in a sort of fifteen minute type city. So thank you again for the question.
Thank you. Every time. Mr. Afalabi, same question to you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. I mean, as we all know. Those two things are one of the fundamental as a human being to survive, you know, shelter and food. So for me, it's really go back to the fact that we live in a space where you know everything costs money. And no matter how much of money, I always say. We have placed policies in place that's making it so hard for us to to build. I was just explaining to someone how. Affordable housing developers, they have to go through the same process that market rate developers have to go through. And we have to understand how these policies is harming us from building. As Mr. Logan explained, that we have vacant land. We actually have about four thousand vacant land in Oakland in general to build on. That that means for a metropolitan city, we're not doing the best we could. Measure U is a measure that was passed and only account for twenty percent of the home that we need by 2030, 2031, I believe. And these need to, you need to understand how to create bonds initiative that actually help us across the board. And for me, every time we build an affordable house, and I think I've raised this in one of the meeting that I was at with Apple. We need to start including grocery store or small boutique like a bodega underneath each. Housing that would be particularly in places like downtown in and in West Oakland. Those are the ways that I think we can combine the food and housing initiative because people need to get to where they want to buy food faster than than they should. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question, we'll start with you first, Mr. Afalabi. What current sources of affordable housing funding would you increase or expand? Now that the regional housing bond is no longer on this fall's ballot, what new sources would you support? Please identify it both one time and ongoing funding steps.
Thank you for this. I believe one of the critical issues like we kept saying funding, right? Funding is everything. And I think that's why we need a business minded person. In the council to really help us raise this money because as a small business owner, as an entrepreneur, what we do is to see how we can raise money. I believe we have now, we need to start tapping into international investors. Because we can all agree that our local or domestic investors. Understand the nuance in affordable housing and how it competes with their market rate investment as well. So I would like to look at how can we get international investment in to build affordable housing. And one of the other way is also, I'm also. Thinking about how can we introduce a different way of people affording housing, which is, I call it the minimum housing program. Where we actually. Tag housing to minimum wage. On my platform, I explain how that works. I think every time we say affordable, we know according to AMI, that is not really true. Because affordable housing, you still have to calculate if it's sixty percent, if they fifty percent, if they thirty percent. And this is, this is an add-on because right now when you go on the hub. Affordable housing waiting list, it's it's out of control. So for one, I definitely think we need to also create more bonds. That's gonna, that's gonna help us every two, two years that we have an election, not wait four years to do this. Those are ways that are going to be able to reach out for more funding for affordable housing.
Thank you. Mr. Logan, same question to you.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Monique. First, I want to just remind folks of our existing sources of affordable housing, both including the low income housing tax credit, which always runs short. Locally Measure U, the state and federal grants that we receive, and then finally development fees. To answer your question, I think there are a number of sources that I would focus on to increase. The the amount that is available for affordable housing. I want to flag, though, that a number of our sources are misaligned. So ideally, as we are building more sources, that they are aligned with the same goals and aligned around the same types of. Services, service provisions and the same affordability level so that we don't have applicants trying to jump through so many hoops. That's critical. The next piece, though, is one thing called a graduated transfer tax. The city of Oakland has a graduated transfer tax right now. Those graduations, which are the steps on the tax we, you know, get from buying and selling property here. Are based on some very old breaks. So as an example, the first step is $300,000. You can't really buy property in the city of Oakland anymore for $300,000. The next step is $5 million. There's a lot of homes in between there that we should probably break up. The city of Berkeley and the city of San Francisco have readdressed this in a tax measure to reassert where those graduations are and basically. Tax the rich for more expensive homes and properties. That's one source that usually gets a lot of support from voters as well because we have to think about getting voters to support these types of taxes. At a time when money might be tight for most Oaklanders and most Californians for that matter. So thank you for the question.
Thank you. This next question comes from our partners at St. Mary's Center. And Mr. Logan, we'll ask you to respond to this question first. How do you plan to incorporate community based approaches into crime prevention strategies in Oakland? Focusing on ensuring the safety and wellbeing of seniors and marginalized communities.
Thank you again, Monique, for that question. I I've heard. This exact question from so many of our seniors, especially in Oak Center, people want to feel safe in their community. And at the same time, they want to feel like they're part of the discussion. So I I'm committed to making sure that people, A. Feel like they have access to me. I've given everyone my cell phone number and I'm regularly in communication with people. The second is, I want to make sure that our emergency response teams are connected with our community. I live in Beat Seven, which is about a quarter of District Three's West Oakland area. There is one officer assigned to this beat at any given time for a total of six across the week. There is plenty of opportunity, unfortunately with such small numbers, for our residents to know every single person who is watching. Our streets for so that we have a better relationship with them. That's issue one. The second is, and I've already started this conversation with our NCPC captains, is making sure that all of the different NCPC chairs. Are connected. That's our neighborhood service councils. Because they are are well connected within their neighborhoods but are not coordinating with each other or with the council member. Again, an opportunity to bring in voices from the community and make sure that we're not duplicating efforts. The last piece, though, and we're seeing this pop up a bit in this in the city, and I saw this a lot with the Flex Streets program. Is that people want to reconnect with their neighbors and that part of their voice being heard is also their feet, right? Showing up to community spaces and feeling welcome. And so making sure that our businesses are open, that our streets are safe and that you feel, you know, just vibrant in our community. So I think it's not just police, it is also businesses and vibrants in our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Afalabi. Same question to you. You're on mute, Mr. Mr.
Can you hear me now? Okay, so like I was saying, I have a criminal justice background. And one of the thing that I was taught that was heavy when I was in college was community policing is very critical to having safety. Police does not necessarily make you feel any safer. What they do, they respond team that respond to anything harm that's been done to the community. So right now, ninety percent of Oakland officers does not, does not live in Oakland. We need to change that. We need to figure out how we incentivize. Police officer that's going to live in our community so that they can understand that. Secondly, we also need to reach our youths. I'm a father of two, ten, nine and five years old. How do we ensure that the ten years of the ten years older of today that in ten years, they're going to be the twenty, they're going to be the teenagers. Of tomorrow, how do we ensure that they value the city and the community that they live in? How do we ensure that they understand that harassing an elderly is not okay? So we need to create that culture because at the end of the day, we are the one raising these kids. And they are, we are the one also complaining that these kids are being bad. So if we don't create a community that support our youth, we're going to keep going back to this. You can create any form of program that you want. The youth and the police, everybody needs to get involved. Another critical program that I'm hoping that we can introduce is called inter-district sports. Where we create an avenue for sport that each district can actually collaborate together and come together every summer to have a unique experience together. And of course, business need to be to open, to get people on the street. So. Those are ways that I believe that we can ensure that safety in our community is actually, thank you.
And the next question, Mr. Afalabi, will ask you to respond first. And this question comes from our partners at, from the Oakland United Coalition. Community has not felt completely part of the decision to sell the Coliseum. What plans do you have to ensure that real community engagement and involvement are part of the process of hearing and approving the development agreement? If elected, can you agree that you will, you will not vote for a development agreement that does not include a community benefits agreement? That was not negotiated and signed by the community?
Can you repeat that question, please?
Yeah, I think there might be a little echo and actually maybe if you mute yourself. It might, we might be able to hear it a little better. Let's try that. Okay, so, community has not felt completely part of the decision to sell the Coliseum. What plans do you have to ensure that real community engagement and involvement are part of the process of hearing and approving the development agreement? If elected, can you agree that you won't vote for a development agreement? That does not include a community benefits agreement that was not negotiated and signed by the community? And I believe the question's in the chat, too. Oh, now you have to unmute.
Yes, I got you there. I I definitely agree that I would, I would definitely agree to that because I believe. If we do not involve the community, there's no way the the that project is going to survive. I mean, we have the Coliseum that we have now because East Oakland in particular has been very affect. Affected because of all the moving part that has happened in that community. So. I would definitely be on board to ensure that we have community involvement. I know that there was a conversation about the new owners are going to include affordable housing in it. Also, I will also argue that we are not just providing housing, but we need to provide jobs. Ensuring that the, you know, people in that community can come in there and work and we probably need to start training them right now. Bringing training in and getting them ready to be, to take. Because one of the things is when those. When this place is built and they are hiring and they cannot find people that qualify for that job, they're going to go elsewhere. So right now, if the project is going to take four years or five years or 10 years, which I think is probably going to take about that. We need to start doing that right now, training, having a training that whatever we need in that space, we can get job to people. So I would definitely support to have community involved in the development of of the Coliseum project, for sure.
Thank you. And Mr. Logan, same question to you.
Thanks so much for the question. I want to first acknowledge how critical it is that we have transparency in all government decisions, especially. When it comes to contracts and selling major city properties. I also want to flag that I don't support the sale of the property. I I think that our best. Way forward is through ground leases, which is our our typical state of of practice with city properties. So I want to name that upfront. The second part, though, is to answer the the main question. Baba, do you mind?
Yes, I'm trying to, but it just disappeared.
Thanks so much. Also, just to answer the question more directly, of course, I I want to see a community benefits agreement signed as part of this deal. Unfortunately, even though the city of Oakland might be selling the property, we still retain plenty of power in this in this process. Mainly because you still have to go through the entitlements process with the city. So there's plenty of bites at the apple. And I think it's critical that the city, the city administrator's office, the planning department and and the neighbors both. Around the Coliseum and frankly, throughout the city are are active participants in what is going to be a multi-phased. Multi-decade process. You know, it's rare that we see this type of frankly redevelopment scale. In our city. So I think it's it's important for us to get it right. The last thing I'll name, and this is especially true for EPO. Is that affordable housing is a community benefit. And so we need to be conscientious of the fact that we want affordable housing as part of this package. And that that in and of itself should be seen as a community benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, Mr. Logan will ask you to respond first. There are many strategies to providing affordable housing, including land trusts. What are some emerging models that you would support? And would you support a tenant opportunity to purchase act policy?
So have you asked this question? So. I want to name a couple of things. One is that, and I think you've heard this with a lot of the people running for office throughout California. The financialization of housing is kind of breaking housing. So we should name that. And at the same time, we need to acknowledge that while our North Star should be a social housing model, the countries that have social housing have those. Because of a long history of either the government slowly purchasing lots of housing and land and being a developer. Or world wars. And and I just want to kind of frame that we should make our way towards. Having effectively a public option for housing while understanding why we're not there yet. Now, that being said, I do appreciate the concept of a tenant opportunity to purchase and and I have been researching. Other models that have happened throughout the country and. While, let me kind of name this. I support the concept and want to be mindful of some of the flaws that we've seen in a couple of the models so far. And want to make sure that they don't accidentally result in the displacement that we are trying to very much. Avoid in the first place. The last bit, though, is that frankly. If we want to see tenant protections, which is a critical component of all of this. I think that we should stop trying to build a better landlord and just encourage people in many ways to own their own homes, whether through. Tenant opportunity to purchase, first time home buyer programs and subsidy programs. That that to me is a critical cornerstone of my strategy.
Thank you. Mr. Afalabi, same question to you.
Yes, I would definitely support a tenant opportunity to purchase act policy. I was, I was. I benefit from that when I was 25 years old. So I believe those are very crucial. And I agree that we do need to figure out a way that this could happen. Oftentimes, we all know that people are not making enough wage to purchase this all. Because at the end of the day, there's a market rate that you have to follow. So. I believe housing, we often hear people say housing is a human right, which it should be, but unfortunately it's not. I like things to be realistic. And the way I put it is this. In housing, the only thing that you, human being created is the money that we use to buy the house. Everything else is natural resources, like from limestone to roots and all of it. So it costs money to build it. And it's going to cost money to inhabit people. So creating jobs. And having governmental support is very critical to make this happen. You know, we do not have this, the social makeup that places like Vienna has because something that I know that people have talked about. But if you also look at Austria, that Vienna is located, Vienna is one of the top five corporate. Tenant to a lot of large European companies. So Oakland does not have big companies to support the type of tax that we need to build this housing. So we have to find a balance where we bring in the money and we can do all these programs.
Thank you. Now we're going to turn to a question on tenant protections and Mr. Afalabi will ask you to respond first. Oakland has a number of policies to protect renters from unaffordable rent increases, arbitrary evictions and other forms of displacement. Which programs do you think are most effective? What changes would you support? And are there new tenant protection and anti-displacement policies that you would pursue?
Let me just say, unfortunately, we've seen there's a lot of people that are on the streets. So. All of those stuff, all of the things, all of the things that we have in place right now. Is either not being applied properly or not being supported properly because we still have a large population on the streets. And people heckle the distrust between landlord and tenants all across the country. So I would like, I mean, I have friends that have been a small landlord in the past and. Whatever we do, we also need to understand that small landlord, a small business owner, just like anybody. So for me, one of the, one, one of the. The thing that I would like to see is support. I think we need to start using our. Local universities, students that are studying, you know, maybe their student laws or whatever. That can help all tenants and landlord get ahead of any issue that they may have. We need to start using technology to have tenants report if there's any issue going on with their landlord. We need to have landlord be able to report a tenant if they are going through any issue with them. Because oftentimes, this thing is more of a communication and relationship issue breakdown. Because the landlord feel like they have to pay mortgages. And the interest rates keep going up or for whatever reason. So we need to be very mindful how we treat both landlord. And the tenant, making sure that they are even even paying for it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next que, excuse me, Mr. Logan. To respond, apologies.
What about my tenants' rights? Thank you again, Monique, for that question. I I want to name something that Baba just mentioned, which is that. I don't believe that that people are on the streets for lack of naming that their landlords are. Bad at landlord-ing. I think one of the major issues is that this city, along with plenty of others in the county. Do not have the resources to hold landlords accountable, especially, you know, our sort of worst offenders. And I want to flag that I'm not saying all landlords are bad, but I am naming that we have a handful that are and that we are not able to hold them accountable. So making sure that we have resources at the city to do that, critical. To answer your question, Monique, though, there are a couple of additional components I think we need to add. The first of which is right to council. I know that that's been a major subject this year with a number of bills coming forward. The other part is emergency rent subsidy programs. We know. The other part is emergency rent subsidy programs. We know that a significant number of Oakland's homeless just needed five or six hundred dollars to stay in their, excuse me, to stay in their homes. It's so much less expensive to keep people in their homes than to provide services once they're out on the streets. So it's critical that we catch people before. The last piece though, is making sure that affordable housing is not dilapidated housing. And this is coming up with, with Costa Hawkins right now with Prop thirty-three. Is that it's critical that we start to think about, A, how newer units age into affordability? And B, that we either incentivize or require old units to meet standard codes, whether with fire, earthquake and um, new pipes, for example. Because it is not okay that your, you know, affordable housing is dilapidated housing. So thank you.
Thank you. And this will be the last question before we provide the opportunity for closing remarks. And we'll start with you, Mr. Logan. And this is a city budget question. While most of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund There we go. Thank you. Okay, city budget question. While most of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund does not come from the general fund, there is more that could be done with the general fund to ensure the three Ps are being prioritized in our budget, including a permanent budget item for tenant protection legal services. What is your approach to reaching a balanced budget? How do you prioritize the three Ps, protection, preservation, production, when it is often pitted against other items in the budget? So Mr. Logan will ask you to respond.
Yeah, probably the most important question. Um, thank you, Monique, for that question and really for EPO for bringing this together especially. Um, just so everyone knows, we have a structural deficit of about a hundred million dollars. We are going to take a while to get out of this problem. So I want to flag that this is not an easy balanced budget and, and that resting a balanced budget on the sale of a Coliseum is probably not a strong strategy, naming that. Second piece though, is that we know that upwards of eight hundred thousand to a million dollars is the cost of one unit, whether it's affordable or it's market rate. We need to make sure that we're bringing those costs down, whether through streamlining our permitting system, making um, more options available for modular style homes, et cetera. Because construction costs are sky high and that's, that is not helping the production of housing. We are required to build, I think, twenty-six thousand units in the next arena cycle. That's insane. Um, and we are not meeting that goal. Um, I see these as an opportunity to complement one another though. The city um, uses Measure U dollars, which are phenomenal because they are our dollars. We can determine how we want to spend them. And I think it's important that we use that funding either to match other funds from the state and the federal government and to rehab at-risk units and bring them up to code, as I just mentioned, and then deep restrict them especially. Um, the last piece though, is that because Oakland has so much vacant land, I don't see us pitting these against each other because you don't have to tear something down to build something else. But I think you've heard Baba and I say this a number of times. District Three is the bank of the city. And so we have to have a tax base to support all these other funding measures. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Afalabi, same question to you. And you're muted.
All right, can you hear me now? I think uh, I can't stress this enough. I think affordable housing need to be the city priority. Uh, we cannot just rely on, I think, you know, you know, uh, organization like Apple and others are doing amazing job trying to make this happen. But the city need to make it a priority to say every two, two years, we need to create fund for this X amount. And I think there need to be a key metrics that we need to do this and also find a uh, a funding source that's, that's not, that cannot be tampered with. One of the critical thing with Measure U that I found is like, okay, we have a measure that, that eight hundred and fifty uh, million, but only three hundred and something was allocated to a housing that only cover twenty percent. And from what I understand, by twenty thirty, we need to, we need to build about ten thousand, two hundred and sixty-one whole units of, of housing. But with, with the new uh, bond, ten billion dollar bond that's been taken off the ballot, that means we need to scramble. And this was my fear when I, when I did the research, like, what about if we are not able to meet the unit that we need by twenty thirty? So the city really need to be active and understanding that we need to prioritize these in a way that revenue cannot be missed with. So we've all talked about passive tax and passive tax, and I'm looking at all these measures. A lot of them hench on passive tax. And a lot of landlords and homeowner are feeling over, overtaxed. So we need to look at different avenues. For me, as, as somebody that's coming from business, I think we have a lot of opportunity there to be able to energize our business community to bring in more funding that can actually directly allocated to affordable housing. And using state and federal tax to join that. Thank you.
Thank you. And so now, um, we are, we have concluded the questions and we will ask yeah, each of the candidates to give closing remarks and you'll have one and a half minutes to do so. Mr. Afalabi, we'll start with you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Um, can you repeat? This is the closing, this is the closing uh, remark. Okay. Thank you so much, uh, everyone, the participant and Apple and everyone putting it together. Uh, my name again, Baba Afalabi. Uh, I'm a longtime Oakland resident, just really in particular. Um, I believe housing is a issue that we really need to be intentional about. I'm a father of two and I don't know on a situation where I have to worry about where my kids and myself is gonna lay next. It's really heart-wrenching to see a lot of family, particularly women and children out there. So we as a community, we as city, we need to really self-reflect and ensure that housing, if we're gonna make housing, uh, make housing available for everybody, we need to be intentional about it. And I do not believe affordable housing based on AMI is the way to go. It hasn't proven there's a lot of people working that they can pay for housing, but we need to change that model. And that's how I'm introducing a minimum housing that, that really link housing affordability to minimum wage. I think that will help solve a lot of our problem because there's a lot of uh, people working uh, in our surface industry that want to live in Oakland, that want to be part of this community, but they cannot afford it because their minimum wage is seventeen seventy-six. If that's the case, then housing need to be hench on minimum wage so that it can be affordable for everybody. You can visit my website under the housing uh, proposal and you can see how I break that down. So my name again is Baba Afalabi and I'm running for Oakland City Council because Oakland need a business-minded individual in the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Logan, one and a half minutes for closing remarks, please.
Yeah, um, first, thank you all again for bringing us all together. This is um, phenomenal. And I, I hope you all can see I'm, I'm brimming with excitement because I love talking about affordable housing as a city planner. It's, it's, it's very meaningful that we get to have these conversations in a city like Oakland. Um, just a reminder, I'm Warren Logan. I'm running for District Three. And I think tonight you all have heard just how critical it is to see housing as an interconnection of um, different subjects for all of us, that it's, it's truly our lived experience, both from an affordability standpoint, access to resources like jobs and food, and that it is um, both an opportunity to build our budget up and that it is a, a source of revenue that we need to be putting out for supporting our residents here in the city. Um, most importantly though, I, I think we can all agree that housing is really expensive in the city. And that if it is truly a crisis, as I think we all agree it is, both displacement, affordability and accessibility and opportunity, then the city needs to act like it is and, and organize itself around that. As a former emergency lead during COVID, I saw the city just deliver on meaningful improvements during COVID. And I know what it looks like to organize ourselves around a crisis. And I want to do, I want to provide that leadership again as your future city councilman for District Three, making sure that we are treating housing as the crisis it is and organizing ourselves by producing more funds, going after additional funds from the state and the federal government, producing the, the requisite number of units that we have committed to with the state for arena numbers. So thank you again, Warren Logan. See ya.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank both of the candidates for your time, your thoughtful uh, responses and for your commitment. So I will now pass it to uh, EPO staff to close this out. You are mute, you're muted, Dolores.
Uh, thank you everyone for joining us tonight, uh, for both panels um, and for sticking with us. We really appreciate all of you who are engaging in this important election, as every election is important. Uh, the video of this panel will be available on our website. Um, and we will follow up by email when that is available. We have our next, uh, our second forum next week covering districts, city council districts five, seven and at-large, and that'll be next Thursday from six to eight. So please tell folks who you think might be interested in attending. And on behalf of EPO and our partners at Saint Mary's, Legal Women Voters and the Alameda County Community Food Bank, thank you and have a good night.